Mr. Robb, we've got some pieces for you, press releases to give you tonight. Don't forget.
I talked to somebody from the village manager's office about the tip thing.
I, I'm sorry, can't.
I talked to somebody in the village manager's office about the purchase agreement.
Okay. Okay. Today is Tu- pardon? Oh, today is Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. I call the village board, I mean, order with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zarneck.
Here.
Trustee Victor.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum tonight. Very good on that. Next, we're going to do the invocation and pledge allegiance. Tonight, the invocation is from Father Dan. I'm sorry, but I still call Queen of the Rosy Church. I apologize. If anyone could please stand. We actually, Father Mo, you want to go down?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Very pleased to be joined here this evening with our associate pastor for Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament Parish, as we are learning to call it, and our associate pastor, Father Louis Imboe, here. We pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Father, we thank you for every public servant involved in governing our city, our state, our country, and especially here, our village. Help them to know that they are your servants first. And please empower us as citizens to give them the respect, do their office, whether or not we agree with their positions. Give our leaders the grace to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before you in all integrity. May they defend the oppressed, protect the virtuous, and keep good order in our communities. Give them the wisdom to enact laws and regulations that foster an environment where every citizen can flourish, spiritually, socially, and physically. This day as we gather, and we also gather in the shadow of this twentieth anniversary of the attacks on September eleventh, two thousand and one, we pray in a special way for all of our first responders. We pray for our firefighters, for our police. We pray for all those police who will be sworn in into their duties this evening. Watch over them, keep them safe, bless as well our EMS, our doctors, nurses, all those who work so hard to keep all of us safe. All this we ask through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
In the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Father, flags to my right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. Father, hang on. Appreciate you being here tonight, both of you. Appreciate it. And I know, Father, you've gotten these before, but you have not. We've got actually chocolate logos to match our village seal there. So, Father, hang on, we've got more here. Appreciate it. The only question I'd like to add is during the opening segment, it's phenomenal, but no endeavor disagrees with the Lord. So, I mean, that never, I've never seen that yet. So, I want to make sure my priests understand that. Right, Chief?
We brought both of us so we could get double the chocolate today.
You're a good thing, good thing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we now move on to the approval of the minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
We're off tonight.
I move to approve the minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and dispense with the reading.
Second. Okay, we have motion by trustee Zarneck, and second by trustee Listner. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show and ask approval. We run out of the mayor and board of trustees report, and just eleven items, Mr. Trustee Frankie. Not too bad.
Eleven?
Once a month, well, it's been a month since there, well, I forgot. I gotta mention about going to Sheila Ray Center.
So, now we're twelve. It keeps growing. Hurry up and do it.
We're gonna stay to it. We're gonna stay to it. So, first off, back in September first, I had the opportunity, Maggie, where's Maggie? I know Maggie was.
Somewhere out there.
Maggie's somewhere out there. We had opportunity to go to the senior center to go through the new Groot garbage can choices, both recycling and waste. And yeah, a chance to do that, and they were very appreciative. Again, in mind, folks, you're gonna be getting new garbage cans. Groot's gonna be a new waste hauler, starting November first, the day after Halloween, that Monday, Groot's gonna hauler, they're gonna drop off to you at your house, a garbage can and a recycling can. Everyone gets them. It's not like before you used to pay to rent them. They're included in the contract. Remember, we're saving money, especially for seniors. We're saving money. And you can pick the size you want. Thirty-five gallon, sixty-five gallon, or ninety-five gallon. And you have one chance to change it. So, if you didn't get to them and tell them what size you wanted, you get a ninety-five waste hauler and a sixty-five recycling bin. You can change them out once before December thirty-first at no cost. So, if you get something you didn't want, or couldn't connect with them, don't like what you have, or you want to try something and change later on, you have that opportunity to do so. So, take advantage of that. Again, we thank Waste Management for the years of service. But the bottom line is, Groot was nine million dollars cheaper over eight-year contract. Nine million. That's one point two one, or one point two million dollars a year, a big savings for everyone. And Groot is an Oak Grove Village company, so we're glad about that. I said this since January, I say it again. Vaccinate, vaccinate, vaccinate. However, as we always said, too, we believe it's a person's right to choose. But I personally, I vaccinated. I think it's right. Talked to my doctor. Everyone knows I had bypass surgery seven years ago, so I went through my health with them, went through it all. So, but it is your right to choose. But by vaccinating, we had those great clinics, forty-five hundred people got them from Oak Grove. It gets us moving past this. The governor has issued a mask mandate in public places. So, in public places, we ask for people to please wear masks. And up here, we're distancing once again. The audience are wearing their masks, but we're distancing here, so we're in good shape. But again, we gotta beat this thing, and hopefully will. The good news for us, I guess other areas having problems, we check almost on a daily basis Alexine Brothers' numbers. Mr. Romo back there keeps me updated every day, even through the weekends. As of today, there's twelve patients in Alexine Brothers' Hospital with COVID. Give you a reference, a year ago today was over a hundred and twenty-five. We have not had a big influx or spike here in Oak Grove. Even through our summer concerts, and we had over twenty thousand people out here for the Beach Boys, and we didn't see a spike. The highest number Alexine had all summer up to now was twenty-four. They've been averaging anywhere from about ten to fifteen, and we're right there now. So, obviously, I know in Oak Grove, especially seniors, huge number vaccinated. I think eighty-seven percent, something like that, and they're the most vulnerable ones. So, again, vaccinate, 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 but we respect your rights. And we'll say that. A lot of people have asked us, we are not set up to host a booster clinic. Not sure what happened in the future. But again, even then, that's a problem with this illness. It changes every day. Now, doctors are coming out from the FDA saying you may not need a booster. You know, just like when President Biden said in May, get a shot, you don't have to wear a mask. Now he's saying, wear a ma- I mean, so it's an evolving illness, so we gotta be firm but flexible and get through this together. So, let's keep our fingers crossed. The Olympics, as we talked about many times, we sponsor the Olympics, the Olympic wrestling team, track and field, and triathlon. We got an event coming up October tenth at Oak Grove High School. We have run, jump, and throw. The U.S. Olympic track and field team members will be here at the high school, on the football field, working with kids, younger kids, on jumping, running, throwing, all that. So, we're letting people know, make sure they come and enjoy it. Jackie Joyner-Kersee, she is probably the most iconic track and field, one of the most iconic track and field Olympians we've ever had. I think she won ten medals over time. She will be there. And she'll also be joining at the Manufacturing Expo the next day on October eleventh at the high school for our manufacturers. So, we're excited about getting an icon like her there. There will be other track and field Olympic medal winners there also. So, it's a way to continue our partnership with USA Track and Field. We also got a wrestling event coming up at the end of the month. We'll be talking about more in the future. So, again, that's October tenth, Oak Grove High School. Look for more information on the village website. Also, on November fifth, Friday, we're gonna be holding a second job fair. If you remember, back on July thirty-first, we held the first-ever village job fair at Oak Grove High School. Big turnout. A hundred and thirty-three businesses were there, all Oak Grove companies, and over five hundred people showed up to go through the, looking for jobs. There was a huge turnout, far more than we expected. The problem everyone was saying was occurring was until this past Monday, or last Monday, Labor Day, higher unemployment benefits were still being paid out. And as we talked to the businesses and some of the job fair people going there looking for jobs, pretty much said was, until that extra money kind of runs out, they're not overly anxious for getting a job. Well, folks, that money ran out. We've got jobs, like everyone else does in this country. We have job openings here in Oak Grove, and some of the job openings are six figures. That's over a hundred thousand dollars. So, folks, that's why we're gonna hold another one. It's gonna be on Friday, November fifth. We're gonna actually do a networking and a seminar for the businesses from nine-thirty to eleven, and then from eleven until three o'clock at the Pavilion this time. The parks of Pavilion, they're very generous, working with us. We're gonna have the job fair inside the big gymnasium. And from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, you register, you get a free lunch again. So, what do you got to lose? Come by, get a nice lunch from Tasty Catering, and get a chance to get a job. Folks, we gotta get back in that job market. Our companies need it. To be successful, we need it. And folks, you don't want to sit at home all the time. Get out there, get a job, get going. The pays are good. We gotta get this economy moving better and get going up and going. So, take advantage of this opportunity. Again, that's Friday, November fifth, at the Pavilion, eleven to three. We'll feed you lunch. Come and get yourself a job at Oak Grove Company right here. Also, we just got news. The property tax bill, your last bill, you know, your second installment is due October first, I believe, right? October first. We're very proud to announce once again, ready to think about the twenty-fifth year. We've got the lowest combined property tax rate in all northwest Cook County. Again, Oak Grove's got the lowest combined property tax rate. That means you have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home in Oak Grove. You'll pay less in property taxes than you will in Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, Des Plaines, Mount Prospect, anywhere around here, we are the best. We're very proud of that. Because remember, last year, we were dinged pretty hard because investments were bad during the pandemic on our pension amount. So, we had to do a pretty big investment on that, on property tax. We're wondering what it would do, we still have the lowest. So, we're very proud of that. That helps our businesses, it helps our residents, it helps everyone. So, Oak Grove Business Park's doing well, and it's reflecting that in the good property tax rates. Also, a little news, how the world's changing. Our Ridge Square condos over there on Ridge Avenue, not far from Oak Grove Boulevard, is converting to condos, I mean, condos, to apartments. The trend of the future. So, they're converting from condominiums over to apartments. So, we're seeing more of that. People are not building condos anymore, they're building apartments. You got them at Taskum, on Prospect, Des Plaines. So, we have a conversion coming. You know, it's the way of the future, and it's not just young people. A lot of seniors are going to apartments. They sell their home, they go in that for the flexibility and easier maintenance and control. So, it's a different world. Another thing, quickly here, our police do a survey. And we always tell you, in Oak Grove, we back the blue a thousand percent every day. They did a survey, and three hundred and fifty-six people participated in the survey, which I think is a lot of people, a lot of input. Out of three hundred and fifty-six, seventy-five percent of those respondents rated our police department as excellent. The highest ranking, seventy-five percent. Seventy-six percent said our officers are very courteous and professional. Seventy-six percent. I don't think there's any board member, except for me, that would get seventy-six percent approval. So, that's impressive. And eighty-four percent, not quite to my, but close, were ranked as approachable. Eighty-four percent of the people out of three hundred and fifty-six respondents, eighty-four percent said our police are approachable. That's huge, folks, and they should be. We want to get to a hundred percent on everything, and we'll work for it. But those are absolute phenomenal numbers. And I say this all the time, and I'm saying it again. Our police officers do the best. They're Kaliais certified, which is the highest ranking, and this just reiterates what we say all along. Our cops do a great job. They're responsive, they're courteous, and people realize that. And I say this all the time, I'll say it one more time. We back our blue a thousand percent here in Oak Grove. They do a great job, and we're proud of it. And I appreciate the people seeing back. So, Chief Walsh, kudos to your department and your men and women. They do phenomenal. Tonight, we're gonna be swearing in six new officers and two promotions. They're joining a great team. I wish they could have heard this, because they deserve to hear what kind of team they're getting on. Also, on nine-eleven, Chief Michael set up a phenomenal remembrance for the twentieth anniversary of nine-eleven. Again, our fire department, kudos to them as always, it's like our Public Works, Mr. Romo, your staff. We've got a great village here, and they do great. But Chief Michael, that was a very emotional, very moving tribute, and we want to thank you for everything you did that day, and it went well. My ears are still ringing from the bell, but it should be over in a few days. We're good on that. One second and last thing. We have redevelopment, I know Tom Robb coming here. Remember the old, when we were younger people, Midway Motor Lodge, Best Western Midway Motor Lodge, it was on the first hotels, they had indoor pool and all that, over there by Bussy, Oakden, and Higgins. As you know, we bought that a while ago. One time, we were looking maybe hotel development. We also bought that one office building on Higgins. We're gonna be closing within a day or so, the white building that's toward Midway Court, and hopefully with the strip shopping center very soon. And tonight, we're gonna vote on to accept a redevelopment agreement with Prime Development. Prime Development is a huge data center developer. And they chose this location, this is one of the first in this area.
This area, they're in the west and east.
Yeah. First in the Midwest area they're coming to is right here in Oak Grove, they chose. And right in that location there. And they're gonna be build three buildings, three stories tall. We don't have any data centers in Oak Grove three stories tall. And the minimum square footage would be about seven hundred and fifty thousand. If things kind of work out right, it could be as big as a million square feet of data center here in Oak Grove. That'd be the biggest, that kind of conglomerate there we have. And that is, that speaks volumes for Oak Grove. That they could have gone so many places. They chose to build the first-inroads in the Midwest here in Oak Grove. We always tell people, we are the data center capital of the Midwest, United States. They want to come here. We're constantly meeting with, talking to, and all that. And that's huge. And people say, well, Mayor, you know, what's that do for the village? That development will bring in between three and four million dollars a year in electric tax to this village. That one development, three to four million. And in Microsoft and T5, just down the street at the Tech Park, it's gonna be between seven and eight million dollars a year, just from those two locations, new revenue to this village. And minimal impact on this community. So, that's why these data centers are huge for us, the ones we already got going. We could see in the near future, we collect more on data center tax revenue than we do in sales tax here in Oak Grove. Remember, we're one of the biggest sales tax producers in the state. That's how much these data centers help this community. So, we're excited about it. It gets comm ed reinvested with more substations for more electrical power. Go downtowny road, folks, you'll see it, you've been seeing it. That's all stuff helping with fiber optics, electric work, all that. That's feeding this industrial park. Big investment by these companies. Millions of dollars being invested back in Oak Grove, and that's why this village is doing as well as it is. So, we're excited about it. And Matt Rome back there does a lot of work. He's the data center guru of, I think, the Midwest, and does a great job. So, Matt, thank you on all that effort and all that. Last, but definitely not least, we've had a lot of people ask us, what's going on with the clock tower? What's going on? Big fence around it. Well, if you look now, you know pretty quick, the trees are down. The clock tower is beautiful. We love it. It's the center point of towns, almost geographically the center point of this village. Right by the concerts we do, the farmer's market, you know, we do play party picnic, all that. Well, the trees did well, a little too well. Twenty years ago, we planted, over twenty years ago, those birch trees are gorgeous, but they have roots. And unfortunately, roots have nowhere to go but up, and it's cracking up the concrete, the brick pavers, and all the rest. So, we're redoing the landscaping around it. Going to redo some of the walkways, make it more ADA accessible and friendly. All gonna be done at the same time. So, that work's going on now, should be done this year. And then the second thing we're gonna be doing is, starting next spring, we're gonna make renovations at the Memorial Park across the street from the village hall. Couple things gonna be done. One, we're gonna put a small parking lot in there. One thing we hear from a lot of our veterans, a lot of veterans or seniors, is they want to park and be able to go in there safely. Parking on Wellington, you know, comes times get busy, it's kind of curving there and stuff. So, we're gonna have several parking stalls put in, including a handicap. And so, that's gonna be available for people to go visit. We'll also put in a new wall of plaques for all the service branches. One's gonna have a nice water feature with it, but two, people forget now, there's a sixth service branch now, the Space Corps. So, we might be one of the first facilities in the country that actually recognizes the Coast Guard, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Army, and now Space Force. So, when we do that, some different lighting in there, and it's really gonna be a beautiful additional feature. So, that one will be worked on next spring. And how is it being paid for? Well, people always wondered, where's a lot of that red light camera money go? Well, it's going to help us build that facility there, help us work on the clock tower. It's for residential enhancement. So, as we tell you, most of that money goes into a fund for one-time use. So, this is going back to improve the village that way. Remember, we still do it, and I'm glad someday I go through, or anyone asks me, red light cameras do work. And Chief will tell you, saves lives, saves injuries, saves damage to property. So, anyways, that's the work that's gonna be going on this fall and next spring. We apologize to the farmer's market, that is gonna disrupt a little bit, not bad, a little bit, but it can only be done during the summertime, and farmer's markets are there in summertime. So, it's gonna conflict at some point, so we figured we pushed it as far back as we could, and that's going on now. So, that completes that part. Now, we have swearing ends. As I said before, we have six new officers and two promotions. A lot of towns are having a hard time getting police officers. We just did a test a week or so ago, as the chairman of the Police Fire Commission there. We had a hundred and forty-one people apply. That, you may think, is that a big deal? That's unbelievable for nowadays. McKinney County, I'm sorry, Huntley had three people apply at their last test, three. I think Schaumburg had thirty-seven. We had a hundred and forty-one. When I talk about these numbers, about what kind of police department we have, that's what attracts people, good people, that want to be in our department, because we've got the best, and that means a lot. So, with that said, Chief, you want to join me? And I'll let you decide. Now, because of COVID, normally we'd be filled up with people here, but because of COVID, we, geez, you're talking. Because of COVID, he's vaccinated, I'm vaccinated. Because of COVID, it's, we're only gonna let the officer that's being sworn in and his immediate, or whatever family friends you have here, come for each one. So, they'll be coming in and out, but we'll try and be extra careful and safe. So, Chief, what was yours?
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board. Tonight, it's my honor to swear in, like the mayor said, six officers, two promotions. The first officer we'll swear in is Dominic DeAngelis. So, we'll let Dominic and his family come in.
George, a pace maker keeps going. You need a new battery. You need a battery, right? Or is that your defibrillator in your hat?
So, Dominic grew up in Plainfield. He's a Western Illinois University graduate in law enforcement administration, minored in psychology. He was a member of the Macomb, Illinois Police Explorers Program. He did an internship with the Joliet Police Department. Previously worked for Exelon Nuclear Power Station as a security officer, and he's currently assigned to a field training officer as in patrol day shift. So, Dominic?
Is it Joliet or Joliet?
Right. You say Joliet.
You say Joliet?
Joliet.
Thank you.
And I believe he's a Sox fan there, correct?
A what?
Gonna have to be a Cubs fan.
Whoa, he's going fast.
You'll be on my back.
Do you call it Devon or Devon?
Tony.
Any sports when you were in high school?
No sports in high school, no.
No sports? As long as you're a Cubs fan, we're fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Now, just so you know, someone was asking, it was a question of the day. When I do swearing ends, a lot of times, you see, I put my elbow here. Well, if you had a collarbone sticking out like mine is from that crash I had, you know, you can't hold your arm up too long. So, I don't do out disrespect, I do it for survival. So, I apologize if anyone doesn't understand. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dominic DeAngelis.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the village of Oak Grove Village.
In the village of Oak Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge?
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations. Why don't you introduce? Do you want to take a nap?
Sure. Evening, everyone. How's everyone doing? Good? I'd just like to say a few things. First off, to my family for being here, supporting me along the long journey it took to, you know, become a police officer. I'd like to thank the Fire and Police Commission for giving me the opportunity to work in this village. I'm excited to start my career here and end it here. Look forward to doing a lot of good things in this community and ready to serve it, however that may be. So, thank you all.
Who do you, who do you have here? Introduce.
So, I have my sister, her fiance, my oldest brother, and my two parents right there.
The only reason I do that is, you know, you're on TV now. Nielsen came out six months ago, we rank about one point four billion people watch this meeting. So, right now, one point four billion people looking at you. So, just want to make sure. But I'm gonna give you your son, brother, some chocolates here, and make sure you share with the family.
Will do.
My heart doctors let me do this, it's all dark chocolate, and the logos of the village is actually on the chocolate. So, we'll give you that. Dominic, wish you well. Here's the sad part, they're getting younger and younger as we get older and older, George. I won't even go there.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Give my hand again. You know, you got the pictures?
So, you guys can go.
Well, go ahead. Sorry about rushing and rushing out, I apologize.
Next. Our next officer will be Cody Phillips.
That's his name. I know. I saw it, I did it.
Cody was born in California, however, he was raised here in Oak Grove Village and attended Oak Grove High School. In high school, he played football, track and field. He went to Harper College. Was Professor Schmidt one of your teachers there at the time, do you remember?
Oh, no, it was actually a gentleman from Palatine Police Department.
Okay, all right.
Oh, so you got a good one?
Yeah.
Oh, Schmidt is not good.
So, he's a Harper grad, and then went to Lewis University and graduated a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in psychology. Previously worked for UPS in Palatine, and is currently assigned to an FTO on the day shift.
Lewis University, Georgie.
Friars? Yes, sir, Friars.
Whoa, wait a minute. No cheating?
None.
We had someone from Lewis about a year ago.
So, I told you, you got bad.
Yeah, well, that's exhibit eight. What?
It's better than any Sox, but you can do. Okay, raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Cody Phillips.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the village of Oak Grove Village.
In the village of Oak Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the privilege of serving my hometown, as you know. Unfortunately, my family, who is right there, my brother and my mom are here, but my dad and my sister couldn't be here today. So, I'd like to thank them for supporting me to get to this point. I'd also like to thank the Police and Fire Commission for having the faith in me to carry out this job. That's all. for having the faith in me to, um, carry out this job. Um, that's all I have to say right now. Thank you very much again.
Hang on a second now. Where'd you graduate from high school?
Two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen. So you played for Coach Dowell, or was he at the?
No, he left just, just, uh, prior to me, so I was, I actually played under, um, uh, it was a gentleman, it was a gentleman from Texas, no.
Yeah, okay, okay. I don't know where it went. I can't remember now, cause I know Dowell was there.
Yes.
And Waylon was there, he was there.
It was, it was a gentleman from Texas.
He was only there like a year.
Yeah, I know, right. Okay. So, and all those people kinda stuff.
Yeah.
Cause Dowell, they had them all winning.
Yes.
And then it was like, you know, wall and.
Exactly.
So, we're glad you're here. So where'd you go back, where's, where's your?
Bosworth Lane.
Oh, okay. Close to, uh, Claremont School.
Yes.
Close to where Trusty Franks is.
Yeah.
I went to Claremont.
Did you go to Claremont?
They opened it for me.
They, they opened way back then.
Yeah, I rode the horse.
I'm not gonna go there. Um, got some chocolates for mom and brother.
Awesome.
We welcome you. You're the best, as you know.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we'll give him a minute to clear out, and then we'll bring in the next group. Uh, Kyle Rudakis. Kyle, come on down. As a family. Kyle, uh, attended. Pat's in a hurry.
You gotta teach him manners. That's why there's only one, two, three.
I'm sorry. Alright, so Kyle attended Dominican University. Uh, he has a Bachelor of Arts in Criminology Sociology. Resides on the northwest side of Chicago. He, uh, previously worked as a teacher's assistant Lombard. He enjoys baseball, football, and his favorite team is the Chicago White Sox and the Bears, and his current assignment is on the midnight shift.
Yeah, he's gonna be on a long time, stays a Sox fan. Dominican University, Georgie.
He's looking it up.
Is it an animal?
Sorry?
Is it an animal?
No.
The dons?
What is it?
The stars.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Don, stars.
Good answer though.
It was something like, I don't remember, but it was something.
It used to be the Rebels. Thank you.
Was it?
Rebels and then the Stars. That's what threw me off.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Howard Aska.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Step up.
Uh, my dad's here, left to right, my girlfriend Haley, and my mom Debbie is here. So, speech?
Yeah.
I worked really hard to get here, as, as you've heard. Um, it's really been my privilege to work at this great village. Um, I'm really excited for what these next years hold, and like I said, I'm, I'm excited for, to just keep going and work here for the next thirty years, hopefully.
Playing sports when you were younger?
Yeah, I played baseball.
Baseball?
Yeah.
Not for the Sox though? Well, that's good.
Park District played, that was the Sox once.
Play better than Sox. If you're in a park, you have to, that's better.
Sox, Sox are first place. We're going, we're going to playoffs.
It's overrated. It's overrated. Well, I got here for you, for the family out there, some nice chocolates to enjoy. Be careful, Father Dan sometimes takes when you walk by, so just be careful. That's enough for you and the family.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Hey, Butch, you hire Cub fans once in a while, too, if you're okay, just so you know.
Wait a minute, where do we spend money on advertising?
Right?
Well, it's called charity. We, you know, we always help out.
Officer Nicholas Marzek will be next. We'll let him bring his family in.
It's not good to leave them last.
Nick, come on down. So Officer Nicholas Marzek, he has a Bachelor of Arts, Secondary Education, History, a Master's in Education Administration. Completed his studies at Dominican University in River Forest. He had six years of prior law enforcement with the Cook County Sheriff's Office. Uh, he's a certified juvenile officer, and, uh, he was also a high school social studies teacher at one point in his, uh, life. Married, has a three-year-old daughter, currently assigned, uh, to, uh, afternoon shift patrol, and he is a Cubs fan.
Hey, the new chief, sir. It's ironic, um, cause I graduated college with a teaching degree, secondary education, and history also. And I taught for a while at Waylon High School. So, see, Cub fan.
I'm telling you.
Man, he could be mayor.
I'll take the coat off.
Well, who do you wanna do that?
Raise your hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nicholas Marzek.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
Duties of the office of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, no. Uh, real quickly, I'd just like to thank, uh, my family. Uh, my parents, obviously, and my upbringing, uh, my wife, my daughter, who unfortunately couldn't be here today. Uh, I'd also like to thank, you know, the village, the Police and Fire Commission, the Police Department, the command staff, for allowing me this opportunity, and hopefully just to be the, you know, best asset to the village and the police department that I could possibly be.
Thank you very much. Hang on. Bring us home to your little three-year-old. Chuck the lovers for the village.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, take care. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Next up will be Officer Rachel Martin.
Oh, yeah. Like, it's one street over, Carswall, and I grew up on Little Chicago.
Officer Martin. If you wanna stand and take pictures, that's fine, too. Yeah.
Or you can sit down, whatever you, whatever you.
Yeah, whatever you like.
We have a second for everybody to get in, we've got time.
Oh, okay. Oh, you do have a big group here. Wow.
Lot of chocolates.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of chocolates. Take your time, folks. We're not in a rush, we're good. Just take your time.
Does Mike Garrison?
Officer, uh, Rachel Martin. She grew up in Naperville. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Forensic Investigations from the University of Wisconsin-Plattville.
Hang on. Wisconsin-Plattville.
We did this before, but it was.
I should know that, cause the Bears used to practice them. We went to the camp a couple of years.
Yeah, and I said the, I obviously erroneously said the Badgers, cause I was hoping they kept it, but I know they don't. So I don't know.
I don't know why I'm thinking Ducks, but I don't think it's the Ducks. What is it?
Pioneers.
Pioneers.
She close, the Duck is a pioneer, so I mean, good enough.
Woo hoo, yeah. Ra- Rachel is also an avid softball player. She's been playing since she was five years old, continued through college, and her current assignment is the afternoon shift. And I'm going with Sox?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, there we go. As our diversity continues.
Bobby will make mistakes, it's okay. So, um, so you played softball for Platteville?
Yes, I did.
Really? What position?
First base.
Oh, good for you. Okay, raise your, I'm, I'm, good, you can get a little closer. One of these have a microphone there.
Oh, okay.
Even Sox fans can get closer. Raise your, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rachel Martin.
Have been appointed, let me take it down to you. Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, so yeah, I have my dad, my mom, my aunt, my grandpa, my other uncle, my cousin, my other uncle, and my other aunt.
Is that a police officer out there?
Yes.
What department?
Warrenville.
Oh, okay. You're welcome.
Yep.
So, you want, it's, say it in the village.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna thank the village of Elk Grove for this opportunity and welcoming me with open arms, and I wanna thank all my family and friends for all the support. Wouldn't be here without them, so.
Well, wish you well. Here, before you go, we'll give you some.
Ooh, chocolates.
Gotta give a laugh, cause a lot of you out there, so make sure she shares them.
No promises. Oh, wow, thank you so much. Oh, my gosh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll do Christina Lovaki, uh, next, when the family leaves.
Georgie, how you doing?
Pioneers, I'm gonna remember that. Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna say the Ducks. Sure, I have duck in my head.
Well, Oregon, but that would've worked.
Yeah, that was a great game. Ohio State, that was, that was a great game.
What? Pardon me?
Notre Dame twice now, barely by the skin of the teeth.
Yeah, D'Antonino, that said the same thing yesterday.
They're not that good.
Correct.
They haven't played, luckily, their schedule's not that tough, so it shouldn't be too.
You could always go to the Navy game.
When they play Wisconsin, they're gonna have a big time trouble.
Yeah, that could be one of the bigger tests of Wisconsin. Wisconsin's not that great either.
No, but they'll, the way Notre Dame's playing.
Folks, just have a seat, you're fine. Another police officer. What, what department's he with? Not your, what's Metro Police? Okay, I will, thank you.
Go ahead, yeah. Uh, we have today Officer Christina Lovaki with us. She graduated from Oklahuna High, Community High School. She has an Associate's Degree in Science from Moraine Valley Community College, where I also attended.
Hang on. No chance of that.
No, I, there's very little chance of that. Um, I, I haven't got a guess, I guess.
What is?
Do you remember Moraine Valley's mascot?
Uh, a tornado.
A tornado.
Tornado?
Yeah, well, it's down on the southwest side, what do you, what do you expect? But she did get her degree from Governor's State, uh.
I think it's the Cyclones.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, Governor's State Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice.
Governor's State?
What? I don't know that.
You'll see, Georgie Ryan, it's not.
No, I have no idea.
What's Governor's State? A Jaguar.
Jaguars.
Many of you may recognize Christina. She was featured in our recruitment posters and our digital billboard, so she's gained some.
Yeah, you'll recognize me.
Quite, quite.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
And her current assignment is the afternoon patrol shift.
Good, okay. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I took a shower today, I don't know what's, never know.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christina Lovaki.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the county of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duty of the office of?
Police officer.
Police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I am Christina Lovaki. Um, I brought with me in the back, that is my sister's boyfriend, Brian, and then my sister Samantha, my dad. They said, wait. And then in front is my boyfriend Tom, who is with Metro Police. We're gonna have you explain exactly what that is. And then, yep. And then my mom, and then my sister Tara, and then my brother Steven. Um, I've been testing for police departments for close to five years, and Elk Grove Village was the police department that I wanted. It was my top department. So I'm very fortunate to be here, working with officers that I do, and such amazing command staff.
Very good. Okay, taking, taking, what is a Metro Police Officer? I'm sorry, but when she said it, I, just trying to figure out.
We're the transit police for Chicago.
Yeah, Metro.
Oh, okay, so for like, uh, CTA buses, mag, uh, subway, the L, not subway, but the L, and all that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so they have their own, I didn't know that. They have their own department then?
I'm gonna give them all about it.
Okay, so, maybe you carry weapons, I mean, you're just like a regular police officer.
Right.
Okay.
So, from my understanding.
Well, yeah.
They have, you have jurisdiction wherever there's a train station. So he doesn't necessarily have to stay on the train, he could go.
Now, is that awesome clue like the, um, Milwaukee Road and?
Yeah.
Oh, so you're at jurisdiction, so we have to McKinney County?
We have both counties, so the six northern counties of Illinois, we, uh, have to, from both counties, so we'll go over, off the county or whatever, so.
I never, I never knew that existed.
You don't get out much.
No, I don't. Okay, well, I've got for her, plenty of chocolates.
Been hearing lots about these.
The sheriff.
So, I get for bringing the posters now?
Yes.
Yeah.
I got another basket here for the last, so you're fine.
Thank you so much.
That should be enough.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna shake your hand.
God, you're fine. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You really know Metro.
I never knew Metro Police.
Yeah. When you're on the L to go down to Sox game, though, you don't want to affect any.
So we'll have Sergeant Tom Malloy come in next, after, uh, in the back, you'll also notice that Deputy Chief from Bloomingdale came to see our ceremony, uh, today. He's, uh,
Welcome.
You know, he likes to see how the, uh, top department does it. You're here for, just to see what a great job we do there, Deputy?
Yes, I'm a spy.
A spy, see?
Hey, Bloomingdale. The lateral thing?
Yeah, right.
Hang on. My dad lived in Bloomingdale for a while, so I gotta give you a. He lived on Cardinal Lane, back up to the golf course, the 10th Fairway.
Yep. Thank you. I wanna bring his back.
Wait a minute, he admits that Johnson, he admits that Johnson left Elk Grove?
He made it to another one today.
Wait a minute, you let your dad move out of town?
Oh, God, yeah.
So tonight, we also have two promotions. Uh, Sergeant Tom Malloy. Tom was hired in September twenty fourteen. He comes from a law enforcement family, three generations of law enforcement service in the Chicagoland area. Uh, he has a Bachelor of Art in General Studies from Northern Illinois University. He was a community service officer for the Oak, uh, Brook Police Department. He was a dispatcher for the, the Blue Island Police Department. During his time in Elk Grove, he served as a field evidence technician, a field training officer, and a trustee on our police pension board. Uh, he's also been assigned to the Major Crimes Assistance Team, MCAT, which, uh, investigates homicides and serious felonies. And he was a criminal investigations, uh, member. He recently completed the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety Supervision Police School, School, and his current assignment is the afternoon shift supervisor. Tom?
I, repeat after me, you can take a mask off.
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Thomas Malloy.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the Counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, uh, I first like to thank the Police and Fire Commission for the opportunity, and the, uh, Village Board, Mayor, and Village Manager for, for having us here, uh, and the Chief as well for having us here. Um, sometimes you, you can't realize how lucky you are till you look back on things in life, but, uh, I, I understand fully how lucky I am to be in the position I am. Uh, I was hired here to a, a shift that had a lot of leadership, that took a very young shift under their wing. I had, uh, sergeants who from day one made sure we were doing the job the right way. Sheera Garrison, Chris Torres, uh, Mike Carlson, Danny Burke, they all made sure when we went on shift, we were doing the job the right way. I had a lot of young guys helping me out, Joshua Boda, Chris Palmese, Tommy Kier, they were instrumental in getting me to where I was going, and I understand my job now is to make sure that this village and community stays safe, uh, and make sure I get to go home to my lovely daughters over there, Quinn, Cassidy, Molly, and my wife, and thank them so much for everything they've done for me, and behind them, uh, my parents, uh, Brian and Eileen, thank you to them for getting me to where I am in my life. Uh, I know how lucky I am, and I need to take the responsibilities I've been given seriously and make sure the upcoming officers, the ones who were just sworn in before us, have the same opportunity and guidance that I was given. Thank you all.
Come here, I got something special for you. Come here, sweetheart. Come here, ladies. I gotta share some, but you can have some too. Now, you know what my dad would do right now? My dad, after we get done here, would take me to Dairy Queen. So I'm not sure what your dad's gonna do, but mine would take me to Dairy Queen, right down the street, not far at all. So, put your hands up. That's for you. There you go, sweetheart, that's for you, got them all?
What'd he say?
Okay. Don't eat them till after Dairy Queen, okay? Congratulations, tell your dad, good job.
Last one.
Yeah, you are. I just keep getting younger.
And we have one more, uh, promotion tonight, Sergeant Josh Swaboda, so we'll give him time to bring his family in.
He's got a good crew?
Mm-hmm. Your chocolates are a legend.
Oh, hey.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, in time.
Take your time. Yeah, anywhere you want, just have a seat.
Not even half of them.
Yes, take your time. This is great.
I'm gonna have to... Yeah, that's off. Uh, no, this is great. Okay, yeah. Welcome again, this is a promotion for Sergeant Josh Swaboda. Grew up in Park Ridge, hired in December of twenty fourteen. Western Illinois graduate, uh, graduate, Bachelor's Degree in Law Enforcement and Justice, Master's Degree in Public Safety Administration from Lewis University. He was a criminal investigator for several years. He also is an instructor and role player at our suburban law enforcement academy, Salia. He's got twelve siblings, two of which are police officers, Gray's Lake and Westmont. His father's retired Park Ridge Deputy Chief of Police, and his father-in-law's retired Cicero Police, uh, Cicero Deputy Superintendent of Police. Uh, and his current assignment is afternoon shift supervisor with Tom, so congratulations.
So, who was with Cicero?
My father-in-law.
Is he here?
Yep.
So you worked with, um, Mayor, um, what's her name?
Matisse.
Matisse?
I did.
Oh my gosh, you got stories we gotta talk someday about.
You too.
Huh?
Just two.
Oh, okay, Josh, raise your right hand. Repeat after me, and I state your name.
I, Joshua Swaboda.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
In Elk Grove Village?
In Elk Grove Village.
In Counties of Cook and DuPage?
In the Counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois?
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Police Sergeant.
Police Sergeant.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I gotta say, I'm, uh, very humbled, uh, to be where I am today, standing here before you. Um, first and foremost, I'd like to thank, um, Village Manager Ray Rommel, leading from the rear back there. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Board of Trustees, um, thank you so much for the unwavering support you guys have given me and the brothers and sisters of my police department here. You guys have allowed us to do, um, what I think, in my opinion, is an incredible job and service to this village, and we could not have done it without your continued support along the way, so thank you. I would also like to thank the, the citizens of, of Elk Grove. As a detective, uh, as an officer, many encounters with, uh, witnesses and victims, um, and just people in the community, um, and the support, um, that we've received from the community has been overwhelming. I can say from personal experience with so much family and law enforcement, the support we have from both the village and the community, um, is a luxury, and it's a luxury I wish every police officer had today. Next, I would like to thank, um, my family. First and foremost, my wife, Elizabeth. Um, you have been a calming constant in my life, um, my rock, my support, um, you make me a better man, uh, definitely make me a better husband, um, as well as a, a police officer. Um, I cannot do this job without you at home, so I thank you for that. Um, I have so many, um, law enforcement officers that have, from my family, that have come before me in this job. I truly believe they have done their part in making law enforcement, um, a better place than when they found it. Um, so it's been my goal to do what I can to make law enforcement a better place than when I found it, um, and I, and I work hard, try to work toward that, um, on a regular basis, uh, to make all of you proud. Um, I have not, um, could not have been here with, without all of you, so, um, my parents, my in-laws, um, my sister-in-law here, my siblings, my nephew, um, so much support from family and friends, um, along the way, um, and it truly is so necessary to do the job that, that we have to do today, so thank you. I really appreciate it.
Did you hear what I was talking out there, about the numbers we got, the results back from the survey?
No, I couldn't answer.
Well, it's, Josh, you say that, makes me feel good. Um, we did a survey, since I know the rest of this, but real quick, we had fif- three hundred and fifty-six respondents to a survey at our police department. Seventy-five percent of respondents rated our police department as excellent. Seventy, or seventy-six percent rated them as professional and courteous, and most importantly, eighty-four percent ranked them as approachable. And in this world, today with the way people unfortunately treat the blue, that is unbelievable numbers. Josh, I know, guys, like yesterday, saw you in the start with, um, that is the kind of officer we have in Elk Grove, and if you focus on our community departments, and that's why I always say we back up to a thousand percent in Elk Grove, and they deliver, and yeah, those numbers, I'm sure, I don't know if you gave them up to him yet or not, but that just shows the kind of guys we have, and I always start through the leadership and chuck all the way down, and, um, it means a lot. So, we thank, you know, in your town, what you do for your town, Josh, for you and all the guys, ladies, we thank you for what you do for our village, because it means a lot. And it's so funny, when you see this crap that goes on TV and stuff, it's funny, the first thing they do when something happens, they call the police. You know, they can be tough on them, mean to them, all that, but boy, they know who to go to. So, the bottom line is, we appreciate you choosing Elk Grove, all of our, for choosing Elk Grove. There are openings sometimes, just, we're giving them what, ten thousand dollars for lateral transfers, uh, but you gotta have four years or less, so, you can, but, um, but we do thank you. And Josh, you're a prime example, the other ones today are the kind of officer we have in Elk Grove that we're proud of, standing back there supporting you and everyone else, uh, and more importantly, it's a job Butch and company has done hiring the officer we have here in Elk Grove, so, and that's a thankless job those Police and Fire Commission has put in, most hours of any thing we have, any group, committee, or commission, and the least seen or known of. Yet you do the most important job, Butch, and, um, you know, Mike and Steve, uh, the other members of the commission. The hours you put in, you hire all these men and women to make Elk Grove great for the Police and Fire, so thank you, Butch, too. Um, so, before you go...
And here who I have here today, um, I have my wife, uh, Elizabeth, there on the end.
Okay.
Her two parents, Gina and Tom, and my sister-in-law Emily. Uh, my father is here, um, my mother, uh, is a physician, she's currently working right now. Um, my oldest brother, uh, police officer in Westmont. Um, my sis- sister Beth is here with my nephew, Jack, Alex, and my sister Jackie, she's a school resource officer in Gray's Lake, and her husband Steve, Assistant Watch Commander, uh, in Gray's Lake. Um, so I thank you all again for being here, and I have a few watching at home, live streaming it currently, so...
Really?
Thank you, uh, Elk Grove TV for making that possible.
Well, that's part of the one point two billion people watching right now. You're all well.
Doing my part.
Here's, uh, got big hands, Josh, hold all these. Plenty of chocolates for you, okay, buddy? Make sure, so we got it for you. Again, congratulations, she'll be proud of him, he's does a great job, so, thank you.
That concludes the, uh, six new folks and our two promotions, and I wanna thank Father because his boss answered our prayers with this group of people, so we got some excellent public servants that are looking forward to working in our community, so...
Do me a favor, bring these up to Butch, hang on. And, and I'll come back there.
Do me a favor this morning, George, follow.
I was gonna dive for it, George. Thank you.
Georgie!
All right, good job, wasn't it?
No, I missed you.
I got it, do it. I give you... Yeah, there you go. That's good, he's, he could be my friend. Just squeeze it in.
Okay, that concludes the Mayor's Report, go on, Trustee's Report, Trustee Prochnow.
Uh, just a reminder that we still have the farmer's market going every Saturday morning in the Elk Grove Town Square here in the parking lot, from eight AM to one PM. There's still a lot of really fresh produce to be held, fresh flowers, um, a variety of other vendors, and each week Cowboy Jack always provides some form of entertainment or activity for the, for the children that come to the farmer's market, so the farmer's market runs until the last weekend in October, so please come on down and enjoy some of our beautiful produce, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Prochnow, Trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanna mention, uh, since I was at the nine eleven remembrance along with all the other board members, I, I, I wish Elk Grove TV could have been there, because the remarks by, uh, yourself, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, our two chiefs, and, uh, the pastor of Prince of Peace United Methodist Church, really made it a special event, because you not only talked about all the things that were going on, um, that day, but also special things that you remember that happened to you on September eleventh, two thousand and one, and, uh, it, it's something I'll never forget, and I just wanna thank all of you for, uh, what you did and putting it together, Chief, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Zarnik.
I agree with, uh, Trustee Listener, that was one of the things, um, the nine eleven ceremony was really very touching, and one of the things that I really recall from was, uh, Mayor Johnson mentioned that everybody remembers that, well, the dates, December seventh nineteen forty-one, November twenty-second nineteen sixty-three, and of course, September eleventh, two thousand and one. Those are the dates that stick in our memories, and I hope we never have anything like that again. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Zarnik. Trustee Feichter.
Chief Michael, like the others, wanna thank you, that was a very touching, very special event to attend on Saturday for, um, the twenty-year remembrance of nine eleven. Uh, I'm sure glad, from my own personal perspective, that this, that you hosted this event, and it was, I think it was very, very important to all of us that were there, and again, I think it would've been great if Channel Six had been there, um, to, to have this as well, because people really are, were touched, anyone that was alive at that time and, uh, know about it and remember what happened. I think you brought out that, you know, when I hear the airplanes flying across, um, now, we might complain about the noise, but there was a period of time when there was no airplanes up there, they'd all been stopped all over the whole country. Very special. Uh, one other item I wanted to make sure I mentioned, um, the Community Character Coalition, which is going to be the grand marshal in the parade that I'm sure, um, Trustee Zarnik will be talking about, um, they are going to ma- for Make a Difference Day, uh, they are going to again be working out at the Jewel Grocery Store in Elk Grove Village, and trying to get people to contribute, uh, toiletries, white paper things, paper towels, toilet paper, but things like toothpaste, things of that nature, there'll be a, given a whole list. What they're gonna have is, uh, they'll be working the parking lot and handing out flyers to people as they go in, asking them if they could buy an item and then contribute it, and then it will go into the Elk Grove Food Pantry and to the Township Food Pantry. And we're not asking for food this time, we're asking for things that people really, uh, as I understood this, cannot buy with having those food stamps. These are other kinds of items which are also very necessary, very important, and so we're asking people to contribute that. Uh, that will be October twenty-third that this event will be held, and will be assisted by a number of students from Elk Grove High School, who we have been told really enjoy working with us on Make a Difference Day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Last, but definitely not least, Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Uh, I don't know how to follow everybody with that, I mean, thank you, Chiefs, but unfortunately I have to talk about Oktoberfest, so you know how I feel, so, thank you. Uh, this weekend is Oktoberfest, uh, for Elk Grove Village, and it starts on Friday from six o'clock to eleven, and then Saturday from three to eleven after the parade. Uh, it'll be at Lyons Park. If you haven't already pre-bought your tickets, you're a little late, you could've saved twenty percent, but, uh, come on out anyways, it's a dollar a ticket, and, uh, we're gonna have great food, we're gonna have great weather, and, uh, good music, and fun for the kids' events will be from about three till six on Saturday, so right after the parade, bring the family down and enjoy some good German food, and, uh, some music, and enjoy everything with your friends, so, uh, we look forward to seeing you all again, it's, uh, this Friday and Saturday at Lyons Arc, I'm sorry, we'll call it Rotary Green now, uh, so, uh, we look forward to seeing everybody out there.
So the kids' fest is three to six, now three to seven?
Six thirty, maybe?
No, I think, you'd said three to six on the program.
Okay, I wasn't sure, that's what I was asking.
Well, they, the kids don't have to go home, it's just that the...
No.
All the, uh, games, the bounce house, all the others.
And the weather's gonna be ideal.
Mm-hmm.
Should be perfect, so, very good, thank you. Um, we'll now move on to the county's payable warrant, the first one is August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Nikoak, your paycheck?
Thank you.
I move that we accept the county's payable warrant of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one in the amount of two million, five hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Zarnik, second by Trustee Listener, and I made a mistake, I said Mr. Nikoak's paycheck, I did not realize it was forty-seven cents, it should only be twenty-one cents, but, well, we'll make adjustments, you'll pay us back. Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
And I do believe twenty-one cents is a very good return on investment. Thank you, Mr. Nickelbach. Uh, motion passes five nothing. And then September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one?
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of five hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener, and without objection recorded, previously, s- five to nothing. Next, we have consented items tonight. Tonight the items are A as in apple, through O as in Oscar, like Oscar Mayer, who you know, I saw it the other day.
Did you?
Not the big one, there was a small one, someone had like, it was almost like a, a pedal car.
Really?
Yeah. So, let me think of it. Um, so can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listener, any button from the board or staff on any consented items. And since there's no one here but staff anyways, I won't have to ask any further. Look at this one, way back in the corner there.
Yeah, he, he doesn't like his nameplate.
Yeah, he's, he's hiding back there. He doesn't wear his mask, yes, he's back there.
Ah.
And see Matt?
He's in the other corner.
He's just being quiet back there. Matt's just laying low, just laying low. But Matt wants me to drag this out longer, because he enjoys it so much. He told me that before I gave it out. Right, Matt?
Pat said the same thing.
Hope they got that on tape.
Okay, and there's no objection, record vote previously demonstrated, six to noth- or five to nothing. Um, we move on now to, let's see here, Plan Commission. Mr. Romo, anything?
I know I was just even gonna thank you, Charles, and you're the deals.
Thank you. Uh, there's no regular geni, we move on to Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Uh, the Youth Committee held a meeting on Monday, and trustee Proctow and myself were not able to attend. It's actually with the Park District, it's-
So who ran the meeting?
The Park District, this is their division of the Youth Committee, so, it's, uh-
So they got something done then?
They might have, and they probably made some good decisions with us being gone, but, uh, we do have the, uh, bonfire coming up in October, and I'll have more information at our next meeting.
And this year, hopefully, we can have it.
The bonfire?
Yeah.
That's outside, and it should be okay.
It should be, that's what we never know.
No, that's true.
Business Leaders Forum, trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Business Leaders Forum continues to co-produce with Enclave Learning and Earning Center, located at seventy-five Turner Avenue, weekly online briefings for any Elk Grove Village-based venture leaders, for-profit or not-for-profit, who want to grow their ventures by developing new thinking skills and other competencies. If you operate an inc- or an incorporated venture located at a residential or commercial address within the village, you are always welcome to be with us online. I, um, was hoping, uh, there was gonna be a, here it comes. If you want to join the next meeting online, uh, on your TV screen now is the meeting ID you need for Zoom, and, um, wait a second, that's not the meeting ID you need for Zoom. No, well, yeah, here's the one. No, this isn't the one either, is it?
Oh, come on, Sam.
We're missing one piece, but, uh, let me give you one little piece that I didn't pass on, I guess, but, uh, it's HTTPS colon, forward slash, forward slash, B I T, period, L Y, forward slash, three C six M T X C. And with that, uh, I think I've gone slow enough where you can, uh, jot this down, and also you'll be seeing, uh, the phone number for Nick Ratcliffe. If you have any issues, you can reach Nick at, uh, elk Grove dot org, N Ratcliffe at elk Grove dot org. And I thought we had his, uh, phone number, but, uh, I sent this to Channel Six a little late, but they're doing a great job regardless. I thought some of these things are, uh, a little hard for people to read, uh, just by listening, but, uh, I do want to also mention that, uh, tomorrow night's Business Leaders Forum and the Enclave Monthly Masterclass at Enclave is a program from six to seven, and the speaker this month is Police Chief Charles Walsh. And if he's anything like he was at the, uh, Camp Enclave, uh, this would be a tremendous talk. Uh, Chief Walsh is, uh, he, he just bakes, uh, all this police stuff, which is a little difficult, uh, so much easier to understand, and he talks about electric cars and driverless cars, and, uh, uh, not with red light cameras, but, uh, anyway, uh, if you could be there, uh, it's not gonna be, uh, online, it's only gonna be in person, so if you could make it in the following week, it's amazing how, how this turned out, but on October twen- not the following week, following month's masterclass is Fire Chief Richard Michael will be sending the class. Again, he presented a excellent talk at the, uh, um, Enclave, um, can't think of, can't remember that, in the-
The campa?
Campa, yeah, that, uh, I guess I had too many marshmallows. But anyway, uh, these two men are great, and they were great at the, uh, nine eleven remembrance, as I mentioned, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, remember talking about the White Sox? Fourth inning, makers won at Elk Grove Village.
What's the score?
Uh, eight to one, Sox. They hit a grand slam, or, six to one, Sox.
Six to one, wow.
Okay, move on now to Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you may recall in the September third Status and Information Report, we received a report from Comcast saying that effective October twenty-seventh, they will no longer carry programming from W P V N, which are channels three ninety-seven, six seventy-nine, and ten twenty-four. If you go to the guide, all it says is to be announced, so it's a little bit like, uh, Elk Grove TV, as far as that goes. But here's the small world, as far as the story, I was on Turner Avenue a few days ago using the mailbox and looked up, and the building at fifty Turner on their sign said that Polsko, P O L S K A, you know what I mean, uh, radio, and, uh, anyway, Comcast station three ninety-seven resides at that site. So, uh, we now only have, uh, W I N D in the village, now we have this other TV station. Now what's gonna happen to them when Comcast number carries them, I don't know, if they're just gonna go over the air, or, uh, I don't know, find another channel. It, even though it seems to be a Polish channel, uh, every time I turn it on, it seems to be Spanish programming, but, uh, uh, I understand a little Spanish, but anyway, I thought it was odd that it was, to think team together, that, that's all I have to say.
Okay, I would stop there, too. Uh, move on to Community Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
The respiratory program occurring place is up and running again, uh, but it's only on Mondays and Thursdays, half day from nine thirty till noon. For information, call eight four seven, three, four three seven, two six six six. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Information Committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you again, Mayor. Uh, in the August twenty twenty-one, uh, newsletter, there was a great story on the, uh, Large Branch Collection taking place, uh, this month, and, uh, the story's also, if you don't have the newspaper around, uh, you could go to www elk Grove dot org, forward slash Branch Collection, and, uh, eh, the residents on the east of Route fifty-three should be contacting Public Works, uh, this week, uh, if they want to pick up next week. And, uh, you could reach, uh, uh, Public Works, I thought I had the phone number, yeah, here it is, eight four seven, seven three four, eight eight hundred, eight eight hundred, and, uh, you could call through Friday of this week for a pickup next week. And, uh, people on the west side of Route fifty-three should be calling the following week, and their pickup will be the week of September twentieth, I'm sorry, the week of, uh, September twenty-seventh to October first. So, uh, check the website, and, uh, uh, I, I got a whole bunch of things ready for you, uh, thank you. And, uh, also, the Neighborhood Watch Newsletter has been issued online, and Officer Malik announced that the next Neighborhood Watch meeting will be held on Thursday, September thirtieth, from seven to nine PM in meeting room E in the village hall. Attendance is limited, and in order to secure a seat, please RSVP by sending an email to crime prevention at elk Grove dot org, or calling eight four seven, three five seven, four one five one. Ah, it's appearing on the screen, uh, by September twenty-ninth. And the meeting will also be online via GoToMeeting, and there's a link for that, and this is it. So if you don't, uh, have your, uh, I'm not gonna read it, because it's fairly lengthy, but if you want to attend the meeting online, uh, you could join it by looking at this, and this information will be also shown on, uh, Channel Six, uh, for the next, uh, few days. And that concludes my report.
And thank you, trustee Listener. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feigtner.
Wanted to, um, add on a little bit to what the mayor said about, uh, our transition to, uh, Groot. From everything I hear on or see on social media, um, people are understanding, and they are, the transition seems to be going very well. Uh, the, um, one of the, uh, things that we talked about was, was would Groot contact us to verify our choices for garbage and recycling bin? And just about three or four days ago, I got confirmation email from Groot that they had gotten my selections, and they confirmed them, and I think a lot of people that were kind of worried about whether or not Groot was actually getting these, they, when they get these confirmations, they'll feel good that that has been all set up. And, uh, we've had a, uh, I've had a few other questions, people have approached me, uh, probably because of my, my job as a recycling chair, and asked me about things about it, but I think the questions were ones that were not from upset people, but people that just had questions, and I answered them, and it seems like it really satisfied everybody. So it's going well, I think, right now, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feigtner. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik. Now, nothing going on, you want to pass?
No, not now. Well, this is it. Hometown Parade is Saturday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Kickoff is two PM. The theme, My Favorite Things, will show a host of many ideas. The village float will be honoring our essential workers, representative from fire, police, public works, the hospital, and Jewel will be on the float as a way of saying thank you for all they have done and continue to do. Uh, Community Character Coalition is the grand ma- uh, marshals for the parade, so please come and acknowledge them and all the others at our parade. Uh, this year, the Shriners will be joining us as they have in the past, but again, to a much greater degree, uh, we have about forty-one units of Shriners, so you're gonna see all sorts of things.
Forty-one units?
Yeah.
How many units do we have as a total?
Fred said seventy.
It'll be seventy... Almost eighty.
So about half Shriners and half?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Could be a long parade.
We, yes, but, you, you know, we haven't had a parade than this, I think a lot of people are really gonna enjoy it.
Yes, good weather, everything.
Weather is gonna be perfect, remember, it does not rain on our parade, so needless to say, the Oktoberfest is gonna have a great day, too. Uh, we want to thank and acknowledge our sponsors who helped make our parade special. A and H Plumbing and Heating, Archtronic Incorporated, Chicago Offset, Cozini LLC, Dumac, G O A Regional Business Association, Grove Memorial Chapel, Jerry Castle and Sun High Lift Incorporated, St. Julian E. Mard Church, and I just want to say, we're really looking forward to it, we'll have a great day. Our next parade meeting will be Monday, October fourth, at five thirty PM in the lower level of this Charles Zettich Municipal Building. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
I figured I'd talk about a lot of things, but I've been requested to land the plane, so I will have no report.
Uh, Judiciary Fines, only Committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Just, uh, construction's continuing on the water main extension project, project along Higgins Road from Oakton Street to Brummel Avenue. The work will fill in the gaps in the village's twelve-inch water main along Higgins Road, providing water service to the recently annexed properties along Higgins Road and I ninety. This work will require daytime lane closures. The project is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year. And that concludes my report.
You know, I just realized, trustee Schmidt does not have any-
Things that he can report?
I know, you're right.
I just now noticed that.
What?
Trustee Schmidt has not one committee, leadership.
Well, he, the leadership, you're right. He's not, well, he doesn't have one-
Give him one of Sam's.
We picked committee, but chairmanship.
Chairmanship.
He's on them, but I don't think-
He's not chairman of anybody, no, just went through it, looked at it like five times.
Probably because he likes to move the meetings along.
We'll talk about that, okay.
You know, I want to add one more thing to Public Works, uh, there's a, uh, Public Works Citizens, uh, forum, and when does that start, Colby?
It starts in the middle of October, I don't remember.
I know it's, I, beginning, toward the beginning of October, are there any openings still available?
Last I checked, we had fourteen signed up, and we still had, uh, twenty, twenty slots total available.
I think it's either a five or six-week, uh, meeting or course, so just like our Fire and Police Academy, Public Works is going to do it this time, and so if anybody's interested, uh, get on the village, uh, news site, our website.
I'll look at the newsletter that we send out.
I know, it's in, but I just thought, this is really a short time, okay.
Okay, um, no report on airport updates, till we can get the rotation done, Midsummer Concert Classic Series, we're working on next year's lineup, and it'll probably be announced earlier than we've ever announced before, these bands will sign up fast this year for next season. Uh, Special Events Committee, obviously we have, uh, Frankie Fest, or some like to call Oktoberfest, um, and then after that, we have our Tree Lightning, will be the next one. Is that far off, two months? Two months only. And then we have Paul Revere's Raiders that night, so it should be a good time. No items under liquor commission. Uh, report from village manager?
Uh, in the morning, I just wanted to thank the police chief, fire chief, the honorary adjutant for, uh, September eleventh, November fifteenth.
That's from the peanut gallery, just so you know. Uh, report from village clerk, Jen.
No report.
And George, stand up.
Uh-oh.
Nope, nothing under, so, uh, that, uh, finish with that, and no one finished business. New business items, got on staff, any items for board members? None, no public comment? I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Feigtner, second by whoever you want, Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Me.
Uh, trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feigtner?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passes five nothing, folks, have a good night, see you Frankie Fest, meeting adjourned.